Minutes of September 26th. Following that, we don't have any A and Rs, do we, Jean? Or do we?
No, we don't.
No A and Rs, okay, great. And around 6:35, we'll be starting the public hearing for a site plan review for Sturbridge PV LLC, 200 Haynes Street. The applicant is requesting site plan approval for the construction of a 1.3 megawatt solar array with a 1,280 kilowatt hour battery energy storage system on 13.92 acres of land and related site improvements. Following that, at approximately 6:55, we'll have a waiver of site plan request from Kathleen Schiff Howard of Owl Services at 400 Haynes Street. After that, we'll have the town plan update, then all the new business, and then adjournment. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes of August 29?
Yes.
Comments, questions? If not, a motion to approve is submitted?
So who?
September 26th.
Second? Okay, Wally and second Dane?
Excuse me, Charlie?
Yep.
I'm sorry, it's the minutes of September 26th.
Mine say 29.
August.
I mean, August. Do we have the wrong minutes in here?
That's a typo on the minutes. It should be September 26th.
So these, okay.
It's on the agenda.
On the agenda. Okay, I could have read it.
Sorry about that.
Sorry. So these are actually the minutes of September 26th.
Right, they are.
We all agree that that's what they are. Wonderful. So the motion will still be for the approval of the minutes of September 26th. Motion second, all in favor? Very good. Okay, so we did originally have this meeting hosted for the center office building. We weren't able to meet there. So we're going to hold off a few minutes, I think, Jean?
Yes.
To make sure people don't come over.
I think that would be best.
So we'll start at a few minutes after the 6:35, probably, just to be sure. And so, do you want to start maybe on your update, or?
Sure. I don't really have a lot that won't take time, but I can let you know that your next meeting day is October 24th, and we will have the application for the savings bank at 200 Charlton Road. And that's to change the location of the ATM and convert it to an ITM. They'll be moving that into the rear. So that will be on October 24th. And then I think the other, I mean, unless you're all amazingly quick, I did provide you the draft survey questions for, to go out with the mail or at the beginning of the year, but I'm not sure you can get.
Well, we can leave it at that. If you have nothing else, we can start to, did everyone get a chance to read through them? You know, I think they're pretty, you know, straightforward, some good questions. Did anyone have any suggestions for something that we should add to any of those sections?
Good. Right there.
All right.
Do we need a vote on that, or just?
Um, yes.
Well, I have a comment. I think that when you ask for salaries and those kinds of things, you're going to limit the number of people that are going to participate.
Is it, it's in a range, though, is it?
It's a range, so it's not an exact salary, and there won't, there's nothing required to be completed. And actually, asking the demographic information is really important to the validity or the value of the survey when we're thinking of updating our housing plans, our master plan, our open space plan. It really does kind of help inform where we're going with things. I mean, we can pull census data, but it's also really nice to kind of get some actual data from people that are living here. We haven't seen that in the past, anyway, so we just did the housing production plan and the historic survey, and both of them had income-based questions, and some people left them blank, but not too many, to be honest with you, because they're not, they're not giving us their name unless they want to. And if they wanted to give their name and didn't want us to know their income, they could leave that blank and give us their names. So I think there's a, there is some value to leaving it in there.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on that?
Just a note on like question five, we refer to like Route 20 between Brookfield Road and Route 131.
Question five? I'm sorry, Dave.
581.
We have multiple, oh, okay. Oh, where should types of development be directed?
Yeah, which includes Sturbridge and Fistale. I don't know if that makes that, I look at it from my perspective as, that's Fistale.
Okay.
Although I know it ends at Cedar Street.
Right. So you're on I, or?
I.
58I.
And other Route 20 locations is, I don't know, perhaps vague, but it's a bucket, because...
It is vague, and that's why we put kind of a, there should be actually a line, thank you for pointing that one out. It should be please specify if you say other Route 20 locations.
Yes. And IIII is listed as Route 15, which is just defunct description of Haynes Street.
Right, Haynes Street, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good, thank you. Hey, do you need any kind of a vote or anything, Jean, or?
I would, yes, I would like that. And just so you know, I am continuing to work with the Open Space and Recreation Committee's Open Space. I believe we have finalized their questions. I've been, I did attend a meeting with Becky Gendrow and went through their questions, and then I met with Carol Goodwin via phone Friday, and we kind of refined some of their language, and I'm waiting for input from the Recreation Committee now. And then, just so the board is clear, I'm not proposing that we update the transportation, public facilities and services, or the Energy and Sustainability Chapters. I really think that we need to hire a consultant to do that work. But I think that with all of the information we have from the historic plan, the housing plan, the open space plan, we can quite easily update these chapters. And then what we did is pulled, kind of pulled questions out of all of those plans and the Economic Development Plan, just because we'll have a much broader audience. This is going out with the charter mailing, so we'll hit every household in town, so. So just so everyone's clear, but if you're comfortable with this, then I would love a vote, and we will clean up the formatting and all of that.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I think. So do you need some sort of a vote, you say, or, okay?
I would like, I mean, I think an appropriate vote would be to approve the questions as provided and to do a townwide mailing for update of the master plan.
Very good. Someone want to make that motion?
So who?
Yes.
Second Dane? Any other discussion, all in favor? Very good, okay. Thanks, Jean.
Well, you are quick tonight.
Okay, I think we've got enough time. We'll start the public hearing. You want to read the public hearing?
Mm-hmm. In accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, October 10th, 2023, at 6:35 PM in the Town Hall located on Main Street in Sturbridge, or by virtual means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law, on the application of Sturbridge PV LLC for the property located at 200 Haynes Street, formerly 200 Route 15. The applicant requests site plan approval as required by the Sturbridge zoning bylaws, Article 19. Site plan review in Article 10, Solar Energy Facilities, for the construction of a 1.3 MW-DC solar array with 1,280 kilowatt battery energy storage system on 13.92 acres of land and related site improvements at 200 Haynes Street, Sturbridge, as shown on the plans and materials submitted. A plan of the, a copy of the site plan application can be inspected on the Sturbridge Town website at sturbridge.gov backslash planning board backslash pages backslash recent filings, or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by emailing jlacy@sturbridge.gov. Pursued to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted in person and may be conducted via remote means if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law. This means that members of the public body, as well as members of the public, may access this meeting in person or via virtual means at global.gotomeeting.com backslash join backslash 472675877. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best effort, we will post the town's website, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Very good, thank you very much. Jean, do you have an introduction you'd like to make?
Yes, I do.
Great.
I'll let the project team introduce themselves and make their presentation, but just by way of background for the board, this application was filed with our department in August, and we conducted a completeness review and also requested three quotes for a peer review of the stormwater and general compliance with solar bylaw. We awarded the contract to CMG to conduct the peer review, and we received a check from the applicant on September 25th. So that is when the peer review was authorized to begin. We conducted a site visit on October 4th. Two members, Charles Blanchard and Wally Hershey, were available to attend the site walk with us, with the applicant. We looked at the proposed areas of the array and actually walked down onto the neighboring property, Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative. I've provided just a very preliminary report to the board and to the applicant, and that was dated October 2nd. You'll note in that report, I do believe there are a couple of areas of noncompliance, just with a quick review, that will need to be addressed by the applicant as they go forward. Additionally, we have received some comments from the Sturbridge Retirement Cooperative. I had received a phone call, and I had conveyed that information to the applicant and to the board. That was followed up in writing today, and you all have a copy of that within your packet, and that was provided to the applicant as well. Additionally, some residents from the Bentwood condominiums have expressed question, more questions, I would say, than concerns, and several of them are here this evening to get additional information on what's shown as a, I believe, a wetland buffer to their property and the proximity of their onsite wastewater septic system facility. And also, just for the record, the Conservation Commission is hiring a separate peer reviewer for issues related to wetlands protection, and that, I believe, was selected at the meeting Thursday night, or they authorized, did they authorize?
What, excuse me, I wasn't actually present, but I, yeah, I'm not certain.
Okay, so I believe that was authorized, or if not, will be authorized in short order, and that will be reviewed. I would recommend this evening that the applicant make their presentation, any questions from the board and from members of the audience that are here, to hear about the proposal so the applicant can work to address those in between now and during our peer review time. And ultimately, I would recommend that we continue this public hearing until November 21st. I think that would be a reasonable time to allow Conservation to get a little further in the process and to allow our peer reviewer to do his work and for us to do our internal staff review. So with that, I would turn over to the applicant to introduce themselves and make their presentation.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thanks, Jean. Good evening, planning board members. I'll kick us off. My name is Jess Barty. I'm from the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Sturbridge PV LLC. So we are here before you tonight seeking approval under Articles 10 and 19 of the Town of Sturbridge zoning bylaw for site plan approval of a proposed 1.3 megawatt solar array proposed at, sorry, thank you.
I can tell you.
Sorry, proposed at, the property located at 200 Haynes Street in Sturbridge. The property is zoned in the special use district, which, under your zoning bylaw, large-scale solar is permitted as of right, subject to site plan approval from your board. Our proposed solar array will supply the community with a source of clean energy that can be readily dispatched to customers. We believe that our application speaks for itself, along with the materials submitted and support, which were submitted to the town clerk and the planning department on August 9th. We believe that the project meets the, the standards of your zoning bylaw, subject to some modifications that Jean has pointed out to us that we'll discuss further tonight. And we are also, I note that we're seeking a waiver from the traffic study requirement of your zoning bylaw. So with me tonight, from the applicant, Sturbridge PV LLC, is Chris Borlasek and Quinn Weinberger and Brian Yergadian from the BSC Group. And so I'll pass it along to Quinn to give you a more detailed presentation.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Quinn Weinberger, and I'll just be giving a brief overview of our 1.3 megawatt DC and solar array and 1.28 megawatt hour battery energy storage system, if you want to go to the next slide. So just a brief overview of Bear Peak Power. We're a renewable energy development company focused on distributed generation and utility-scale solar solutions. Our team holds over 40 years of combined energy industry experience, and we have 85 megawatts in five different states, fully operational, and over 500 megawatts of PV energy under active development. And the pictures just show a couple of our in-service projects located in New York. This slide just shows a quick overview of where the project is located. On the left there, you can see the Town of Sturbridge with the pin representing where the project location is. On the right, the blue parcel boundary shows the about 14-acre parcel, subject parcel, and the project footprint is located in red. On this slide, this is the site plan, and just to address a few comments from the initial review, we are highlighting in the zoomed in circle there, the concrete equipment pad and the battery energy storage system. Those were deemed to be not, are, they were deemed to be within the setback zone, so we're working with our engineers right now to figure out a more appropriate place to locate those, as well as the 200-foot setback from the southern parcel that we will adjust as well. Next slide, please. On this slide, I'm just showing the site access from Haynes Road. We'll construct a 20-foot wide gravel access road that will be utilized for any necessary access to the site. In terms of interconnection to the utility grid, the point of interconnection is located northwest of the project area, and this will connect to the grid via existing circuit owned by National Grid that will just need to extend a little ways up to get to the existing infrastructure. We are anticipating this project to be completed and interconnection screenings by the first quarter of next year, and this project could be fully operational as early as the first quarter of 2025. Terms of visual mitigation, because the site is forested currently, we're not anticipating any further visual mitigation at this time. In terms of traffic, site access, and safety, it'll take about three to six months to complete construction of this site, and during that construction period, an average of 15 vehicles will enter and exit the site per day, which will be the most heavily trafficked, trafficked period of this, of the lifetime of this project. And then during the first year, there'll be approximately one visit per month to the site for things such as maintaining the vegetation and to inspect the condition of the project itself. The project doesn't require physical presence to operate. Instead, it'll be remotely monitored to ensure safe performance. And then, as I mentioned previously, there is an access road from the existing infrastructure that will be accessible by local emergency personnel, and those personnel will be trained on how to deal with any issues that may arise with the system. In terms of noise, we don't anticipate this project to produce any significant noise, especially since it's surrounded by vegetation, so no noise, no significant noise impacts are anticipated with this project. Another comment that we received back was a concern with the glare analysis. We're updating the site plans now to include a module that you can see here has anti-reflective coating, and we've done the proper due diligence with the FAA to determine that there is no hazard to air navigation with this project as well. Terms of decommissioning, just so everyone is aware, decommissioning is just the removal of the system and restoration of the site when the project reaches the end of its lifetime, and we are hoping to set up a decommissioning bond with the town when this project receives site plan approval. And then I'll just pass this off to Brian to give an overview of the stormwater and civil design.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, my name is Brian Yergation. I'm a professional engineer with BSC Group, and I'm here representing the applicant tonight. And I just wanted to, a couple of things I wanted to touch on in, in the spirit of giving an overview of the entire project, would be, the first thing would be the site grading. So the site, if you, if you're familiar with it, it's, it grades up from the road. It goes up to a fairly high ridgeline that runs north and south across much of the property, starting at the southern end and heading north. And then on the backside of that, it also drains down to the Sturbridge Cooperative site, residential properties on the eastern side. Efforts have been made to, to not alter that, so that the drainage patterns are the same, both pre-development as well as post-development. Obviously, though, we are proposing a decent amount of clearing. It's a solar site, so the biggest sensitivities are from the southern side, from the western side as well, but we have to make sure that there's enough clearing so that there's no shade that's cast on any of the, on any of the panels. But that being said, we still will be maintaining a fairly significant vegetative buffer around the perimeter of the site, the largest section of that being really in the southeast, the land that's adjacent to the cooperative. And leading into stormwater, so for the stormwater management, for the design, has been done in accordance with the Mass DEP Storm Water Management Standards for New Development, and we'll be meeting, we are meeting all of those standards. In addition to that, we've designed four different systems, stormwater systems throughout the site to manage stormwater post-development, and each of those systems has been designed, not only for up to the 25-year, but we've actually designed them for the, up to the 100-year storm. So each of these has the ability to, to manage the 100-year storm, and so there would be no anticipated flooding off-site. Couple other things I wanted to touch on, so we have two different types of systems. We have three subsurface systems, which would be comprised of storm tech, it's a high-density polyethylene, plastic chambers below the ground, and those three systems will accommodate, manage stormwater runoff from the western portion of the site, which will drain towards Haynes Street, including the gravel access road and portion of the, of the driveway itself. And then on the, in the eastern section of the site, we have, at the southeastern end, we have a large infiltration basin that's proposed. So that's a surface structure, there's nothing below the surface. One of the questions that I'd seen came up and was forwarded to us by Jean was, why did we not extend the basin further, or why, you know, why doesn't it go along the entire length of the way? And really, there's a couple of different reasons. If, if you're familiar with the site, at that point, I guess I'll call it at the midpoint along the eastern boundary, where you can see just off the site, there's a, what looks like a road that's there, and that, that is a, that is a private road. The slopes from that road leading up to our property are very steep. In fact, they're the steepest slopes that we have anywhere on the site. And so if we were to extend a basin over there, we would have to be clearing much more land in order to grade it. And when it, and when it's so steep, and you have to try and, you know, you're trying to cut something in and then make up that grade on the back end, it would push the footprint of the development far too close to the property line, and it would really degrade the nice vegetative buffer that exists. Thank you very much. So that's one of the main reasons that it was done, is that it would really, we don't want to excavate too close to that area. And the other, the other reason, the other reason really is that it's not needed. The system that we have, we have different analysis points where we compared pre-development stormwater runoff to post-development stormwater runoff, and one of those areas is the entire eastern property line. And so we looked at that, as well as flows to the south, to the, to the wetlands, to the north, and to Haynes Street. And so in all cases, we are, with a couple, what I would consider de minimis exceptions, we are meeting both the, let me rephrase it, there will be less stormwater runoff, both in the peak rate of it following development than there is pre-development, as well as the total volume of runoff leaving the site following development will also be reduced in all of the design storms that we looked at. There are a couple very minor exceptions, like three decimal places over, and that, that would be considered a de minimis or an insignificant increase, as well as we're going to be providing stormwater quality treatment for those areas as well. That's just a very general overview, and be happy to address, you know, more, any questions you have, or if there are further questions from the others. Thank you.
Very good. You have anything else you want to present, or?
We just have one more slide here.
Sure.
Which slide do you need me to?
Uh, one more. Oh, sorry, is this not even controlling anything? Okay.
Yeah, just, thank you. Just to wrap up, some next steps for this project include site plan adjustments and approval, and we're planning on executing an interconnection agreement with National Grid upon the completion of interconnection studies in 2024, and then we plan on working towards both a pilot agreement and a decommissioning bond with the town as part of our next steps as well.
Very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any questions from the board? Dane, do you have any comments or questions at this point?
Do you know if this is a net cut or fill of the site?
We have not done that analysis yet. What I, what I can tell you is that there are some areas in the central portion of the site that are going to require a little bit of fill, and the fill is only because these, this section of the site, the slope would be decreasing towards the north, and with the panels want to face south, so there is a limitation on how steep you can put them, and that generally, that's about 15%. So there's a little bit of fill that's required in the central portion of the site, as well as to accommodate the access road that runs along the site. However, a lot of that fill will, will come from the infiltration basin that we're going to excavate in the rear. I think it's pretty close, but I don't have that, I don't have that balance. We haven't done a cut fill on it.
Okay. That was my gut. I looked at the big hole you're digging, and I saw the giant hill you're building. It made a lot of sense. You talked about some de minimis exceptions to the overall decrease. Could you talk about where those happen?
To be honest, I didn't, I don't have my stormwater report with me tonight, but...
We can dig into it later. I know that the layout's going to change a little bit, so it might be, maybe this isn't worth getting into at this point.
I would, yeah, I would tend to agree with you there. But you can certainly look at them, and I would point you to, I don't know how the, if you have PDFs of the stormwater report or not, but there is a table in the front section that discusses that, we call them nodes, and there are four of them where we, representing different areas where we studied and compared the pre, and so there are tables in there, and then you go all the way over to the column on the right, it says the net increase, it's either a minus or a plus, and there's a couple that are a plus, but they're very small. But I can nail that down more. Once we have the peer review and so forth.
Okay. That's all I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Wally?
No, I'm good. I went on this side, so you'd visit, and there was, a lot of my questions were answered that day, I think.
Very good. Sue?
No questions.
Okay.
No questions for me, thank you.
Brad?
No questions for me, thank you.
Dave?
Just a general question, is this the first, how many other projects has Bear Power done in the Commonwealth?
Bear Peak Power itself has not done any other projects. I've been developing and designing projects in Massachusetts since 2013. My very first one is in Grafton, Massachusetts. My very first one is in Grafton, Massachusetts. Then I did one in Franklin, and then more out west.
All right. Thank you.
Now, you had mentioned on the connection to the existing infrastructure. That's, is that shown here? In the area, in the, is it up toward Kelly Road area? Is that where the connection will actually be?
For interconnection?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, there's an existing three-phase circuit, pretty much terminating where the existing solar project is. So we're proposing, or we're in coordination with National Grid, we're proposing that extension along Kelly Road and then to the south on Haynes Street.
Okay. So in all the National Grid infrastructure after that, none of that needs to be upgraded? At that point, you have enough capacity to take whatever you have?
Yeah, that's correct.
Along that same line, you, we've talked about this the day that we had the site plan, you'll be on poles on the parcel until you hit Haynes Street, then you're the one to ground then?
Correct. And something, if you were really following it closely, you might have noticed that, I think one of our slides has showed the interconnection, proposed interconnection. And, yeah, that's the one. And if, just point at the top of that, you'll see that if you start it to the right where the interconnection is, it says existing N grid pole number 15.
Yes.
Then you can follow that to the left. You'll see that we have a line which kind of cuts diagonally down towards the northern section of the site. That's actually where there's a wetland there, so that's, it's actually going to come down the sideline of Haynes Street is what we would ultimately propose, and then into the site along the sides of the access road, as you suggested, which is what we, I think we, that came up during our site visit.
Okay. Very good. Dane, do you have anything to add or question at this point? Are you all set?
No, I'm all set, except, I'm sorry, I failed to mention at the start of the hearing, I think if the board is comfortable, you probably could vote to waive the requirement for the traffic study this evening, so we could dispense with that. It's consistent with what we've done with every other array that we've approved in town. I think the traffic is pretty inconsequential.
Sure, it seems that way. Okay, thank you. Okay, it is a public hearing. We'll open it up to the public now. If you have comments or questions, come up to the microphone and also identify yourself and your address.
Good evening. Barbara Murphy, 30, Bentwood Drive, and I'm a member of the Board of Trustees for Sturbridge Crossing, and we're the abutters on the south side. So I wanted to bring up, the first concern that I have is, when I've been looking at their maps, that I'm concerned about the fact that we have a sewer between the south border and then one of our buildings. I don't, I can't speak to exactly what the distance is to it, but I sure know that there is one there. And in the maps, when they're, when you're showing the elevation lines and so forth, they really aren't, they really aren't almost adequate on the abutters, with the abutters. So when you're showing your drainage areas, like very specifically, there's this area you call 4S, and you're going to, you say it's going to drain to 4R, which is 30, that's 30 Mashpog Road, that's a different property. You're saying it's going to flow back of us. There isn't anything to indicate, there's not enough elevation lines to show that that's really the case. I can certainly tell you, just living there, that that's a low area, where that sewer is low. It's lower than your border, it's lower than 30 Mashpog. So you're saying it's going to drain there, and I would need some, to be satisfied, I would need some better verification of that. I can certainly see the, side by side, on either side of that 4S, there were a couple of basins or catch areas, I'm not sure what they're exactly called, but you did also designate a runoff area. So I want to be sure that that's not going to hit that sewer, because I know that's low. So that's one of the things. Do you want to address that now, or get, I can wait for other questions?
Sure, I can, I can try. And if I don't do a good enough job, let me know, and then I will promise for the next hearing to have a better answer.
Okay.
So 4S is the, stands for, the S stands for subcatchment. And that is, subcatchments is how we model the stormwater. We have, we say it's a given area that drains to a given, it could be a point, but it can also be an entire line. It could be a 300-foot section of a property line, too. And so in this case, 4R is meant to generally represent the areas along the southern boundary line of the locus property. So it's, I almost think maybe you were thinking that it's exactly where it shows that, that square on the plan, but it's not. It's meant to be that entire area.
Okay, all right. There was another map where you did have that 4S and a big triangular area, too. I saw that.
And the triangles are ponds. And a pond is just the name of a type of, one of the nodes that we use in Hydracad to model the stormwater. Things are either a subcatchment, which is an area of land, or it could be a pond, such as a drainage basin, subsurface or surface. And then we have the reaches, which are the squares, and we use those as points to study to compare the pre-development versus the post-development runoff.
Okay, so since you haven't been, oh, do you want to stop?
Yeah, well, actually, Barbara, I think it'd be better if we could just, you know, get the comments and concerns out and make sure that they're recorded, and they will address them, and we'll make sure that our peer consultant, you know, addresses them as well, rather than trying to solve them here. So if you could raise the issues, that would be really good.
Okay, so the issue is the sewer and whether, what the runoff is going to do there. We do have another issue that, about, about gate, about the way that there'll be an entrance. The entrance has to be from Haynes Road. And there was an objection from, or a concern from one of our residents that, about what that gate would exactly look like, if, because this is Sturbridge, and so we do have sort of a rustic type of environment there, and if it's just going to be sort of that metal type that, you know, that kind of looks like the entrance to a concentration camp, or, you know, so we were just wondering if that's something that can also be addressed, that, just an aesthetics concern.
Sure.
And then my last concern is just going to be about notice. I think that's just to be addressed more to Gene. I want to be sure that everyone in our, and everyone got one of the notices for this meeting, because I know that one was missed on the Conservation Commission, so.
So, yes, so I think the wetlands, so the applicant does the notification based on the list that the abutters provide, the assessors provide, not the abutters. And so the list was correct. I believe the wetlands person who did the mailing actually had a typo and corrected that. So we do have all of the receipts that they were mailed out to the appropriate addresses in this case.
Okay, great. So you know the, okay, good, good. Because what happened was the six Bentwood went to 66.
66, that's correct. You're welcome.
That's what I got.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Mike McGloone, eighth Bentwood Drive, Sturbridge, trustee, also with Sturbridge Condominium Complex. On your, is it 4R, the south side? Is that a retention pond in the east side of the southeast corner?
That's an infiltration basin, yes.
Infiltration basin, not a pond, right? Or is it?
Yes, not a pond, in other words...
It's storage area for water runoff?
Correct.
That the ground is going to absorb?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I thought. And we have a, on our property line, there is a newer septic field right in there, which is the lower point to our whole system. And you have an upper gradient. So that stormwater that's going to discharge into the ground is going to be coming down into that field somewhere along the lines, sooner or later. It's all gravel up in there. So my question is, how much is that going to affect our leach field? And that we need some kind of guarantee that it wouldn't affect it, and if it does, you would remediate it?
You can address the board. We'll make note of that and make sure that we are aware of that issue. I think it's similar to an issue that was already brought up about the location.
The location of the septic?
I wouldn't mind if it was both at the same height, but we're probably talking 20 or 30 feet difference in height.
Right.
And I'm thinking it's just going to all end up there. I know that we're talking about a 200-foot buffer now for aesthetics. Would that include the retention pond, or whatever you want to call it?
No, so the, it's, that would be, that would be, that infiltration basin would be, I guess, on the southern end, right now would be within the 200-foot buffer.
So you're just going to move the solar panels to, for the 200-foot?
Correct.
But you want to leave that?
Correct.
Okay. And the batteries that you're using for storage, they're going to be on the north side facing Kelly Road?
So, correct. They're currently shown on the north side, and I think on one of our very early slides, we addressed it as it was brought up during Gene's review, that those are within the 200-foot buffer to the resource area, I believe. So we're going to attempt to relocate those, and I think most likely that's just going to be to the east.
Northeast?
To, well, from where they are, yes, to the, to the east, northeast a little bit. So they'd be on the other side of that area.
Lithium storage batteries?
Currently, they're planned to be lithium technology, yep.
And if there was a, if there was a defective battery that caused the fire, like other lithium batteries, would the smoke that would be coming from there have any adverse effect to health and safety of anybody in the area?
In the very unlikely event that a fire were to spur out of the ignition of the batteries, it would not cause any environmental air pollutants to occur as a result of the fire.
Not from the plastics or whatever the container would be, or whatever?
The container would be a metal container, so, yeah. It's no different than a battery that would be in your phone, similar type technology.
Okay. So right now, back to the septic system, you're going to...
I think of the issue being raised, and they will have to, you know, verify that the system will work and not affect any of the surrounding septic systems, and we have a peer review that'll be reviewing it.
And that we'll have some kind of language that we can, if it does, that we can look to you guys to remediate it somehow? Because we're going to be the ones stuck with it.
Yeah, well, I mean, generally, when we reach an agreement that we all understand that this is actually a system that is properly designed, and our peer review consultant agrees to that, then that's usually the limit. We don't usually get into other agreements if something fails, but I'll let Gene, if you want to add anything to that.
I don't want to add to that. I just want to clarify that the battery and the other equipment was in the 100-foot setback, not the 200-foot buffer to the resource area. That's somebody else's department, and I don't want to go there. But it is in the 100-foot setback to the property line.
I used to own a lot of the land on the other side of Sturbridge.
Mm-hmm.
At the, where the horse park was going to be.
Okay.
And the Sturbridge landfill was leaching into the ponds that I owned. And from my understanding, DEP told me it was my problem, not the town's problem, that I had to remediate it. So back to, over here, if I'm running into a problem, I'm running into the same thing, I'm getting people pointing their fingers the other way. So that's why I was asking for the...
Okay, well, thank you for your concern. Thank you.
Charlie, the only thing that I, that I could add is, we are having a peer review on this, and if it's properly designed, it shouldn't impact, there should be no off-site impact.
Exactly.
If the project is appropriately designed.
Point of the stormwater, you know, regulations or bylaws, make sure that... Yes?
Jim Waddick, 56 Bentwood Drive. I just want to clarify something. The leach field we're talking about is in the far northwest corner of our property, and it services six units. So six units are affected by that. Now, we attended the CONCON meeting last week. They're going to have a peer review. I already talked to Becky. They're having a peer review. This is back on their agenda for the 26th, so we're going to get some clarification there. I just wanted to make it clear that they're still looking at this in terms of that septic field, and they're going to get, we haven't been contacted, might even want to come on our property yet. So they're waiting for that to happen, and we're waiting to be contacted, because we'll let people on if they want to come, but they have to let us know. That's, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, anything else? Anyone else? Okay. Any other comments from the board? Should we have the vote to continue?
Do you want to entertain waiving the traffic study first?
We can do that first, sure. I think that's a good idea. Get that out of the way, sure. Do you want to make a motion to waive the traffic?
Make a motion to waive the traffic study as it pertains to 200 Haynes Street and the solar array that's being placed there.
A second.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? All in favor? No one? Very good.
All right, and so then I would recommend that you continue the public hearing until Tuesday, November 21st, at 6:35 PM. And that should be in the Center Office Building. I'm assuming our technology should be repaired by then.
Great.
And that should allow time to get some of these reviews and questions answered.
Very good. Thank you. We have that motion, please?
Sue?
Second. Dane and Wally. Any discussion? All in favor? Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
A little late. That's okay.
Oh, that's awful.
You're welcome. Yes, I'm leaving. I'll be back next Tuesday afternoon.
Hey. Okay, so next we have a waiver of site plan request for 400 Haynes Street. You have somebody, oh, churning us remotely? I guess we do. Good. Oh, I don't know. They're pretty expensive.
Who's on there? Is the applicant for the 400 Haynes Street request on the meeting? There's somebody on there.
Do we know? I mean, who's this Shane?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
Hi. I am, I work for Owl Services, who is probably the applicant for that. I am, I'm a superintendent for them that was just sent an invite, so I'm happy to try to answer anything, but I really don't have a lot of information on that particular site.
Can we have your full name, please, Shane?
Shane Bruno.
Thank you.
So... I believe invited to me is an extra, but I'm happy to try to play a part here.
We really don't have great sound on this thing, do we?
No, we really don't. It's a pretty simple proposal. If you'd like, I can...
Why don't you go through it, Gene?
Go through it.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So as the board will recall, recently, the Flying J Pilot Travel Center was completely reconstructed with new buildings, new parking areas, and new truck parking areas. They are proposing through Owl Services to install two electric vehicle charging stations, which you can see on sheet C3 of the plans that are in your packet. So these spaces would be parked, excuse me, placed over by the store area in the side parking lot. And there are plenty of parking spaces there. I believe I need my report here. So we'll actually be losing eight parking spaces from the original approved plan. However, there are 104 parking spaces on-site, and 88 are required by the bylaw. And I would say that if we ever have any parking issues with pilot, it's not cars, it's more with the truck traffic.
Sure.
So the EV charging stations are allowed by right. They're encouraged in the bylaw. However, since I, we had not yet closed out the permit for pilot travel, I required the applicant to file for a waiver of site plan, just so that we could get it on the record, have a meeting, and I can have them modify the approved site plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on this or concerns?
Charlie, did you say that it's a reduction of eight? I was just reading the application. It says a reduction of four.
However, since I, we had not yet closed out the permit for pilot travel, I required the applicant to file for a waiver of site plan, just so that we could get it on the record, have a meeting, and I can have them modify the approved site plan.
Okay, very good, thank you. Does anyone have any questions on this or concerns?
Charlie, did you say that it's a reduction of eight? I was just reading the application. It says a reduction of four. Just curious which one it is.
Uh, if we, in theory, if we take eight parking spaces and we put in, I believe this is two 350-kilowatt chargers, it adds four charging spaces. So we initially take eight parking spaces and you end up with four charging spaces. Does that, does that maybe help clarify that?
That explains it perfectly.
It does. So, so for me, it's a reduction of eight parking spaces that anybody could park in, and we result in four EV parking spaces.
Correct.
Good, okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Any other, any other comments or questions? If not, could we have a motion to waive the site plan?
One question. Regarding the parking spaces in general, uh, you just stated that there was over 100 parking spaces that are available?
There are 104 parking spaces total on the property.
So they would be at the truck stop section instead? Is that what, how they're counting this?
Um, it's all one property, so total on site is 104.
So they're viewing it as a contiguous thing and not, because it's kind of partitioned a little?
It is, but it is all one site, and it was all one site plan. So there were 104 total on the approved site plan. And then this will be a reduction of eight of the automobile, the car spaces, not the truck spaces.
All right, just to, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Great, okay, thank you. So can we have a motion then to grant the waiver?
So moved.
So Sue, second. Also, Wally. Any other discussion? All in favor? Very good, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane.
Thank you, Shane, for coming in. Okay. Gene, do you want to go over on the next item?
So Matt Saucic is actually here, and I printed out a plan for him.
Welcome. I'm back. Thank you. Gene?
I guess I sent the board all of the information that I had via email today. Um, and as you can see from the email, Matt is requesting a change in sidewalk type from concrete to asphalt. The plan was originally approved with a Cape Cod berm, which be, would be an asphalt berm, and it showed a concrete sidewalk in place of that. So I did reach out to the DPW director, Heather Blakely, this morning, and we discussed it. She generally does not have a concern with the change. She did provide me our standard specification for hot mix asphalt sidewalks in place of the concrete sidewalks that were proposed. And she does feel that it's more durable and easier for DPW to maintain and repair, because ultimately we will be accepting the subdivision road. So I guess just to remember, this is the road going in. This is not the 55 and over that was recently approved. It's the main access road from Main Street by Edwards Gas there. So I asked Matt to come in and just explain to the board why he wanted to make this change. We printed out a plan, so he can show you on the plan where the change would take place and ask for the board's input, because as you know, I have the right to do what we term field modifications, which I consider to be kind of minor modifications. We, we hit some ledge, so we moved this here, we did this, but, um, this I felt needed to come before the board. I don't necessarily have any concerns with it, but didn't feel appropriate that I make that decision without the board's input.
Yeah, in, in the past, I mean, the, the planning board has approved both, uh, concrete and also asphalt, depending on really what the developer has proposed in most cases, so just a little background on that. Matt, do you have?
Yeah, no, thanks, and thanks for squeezing me in. I definitely appreciate it. I did run this by Gene, and basically you hit on the, the sum total of it. I mean, we could have proposed asphalt when we brought this in here for, I mean, yeah, asphalt, when we brought it in for approval, um, we didn't, I mean, it's a, it's a mix of a whole slew of, of reasons, some of which, um, the DPW hit on, uh, soil conditions up there will be more supportable to asphalt. Asphalt's a more movable finished product than, um, than the con, con, 4,000 PSI concrete. So, and, and it really came down to, one of the keys, I probably hit on it in the email to Gene, um, if she shared that with you, but timing is key here. You know, it's, simply put, I can't get the sidewalks in if they're concrete, because they're, um, you, you can't get a contractor to do that. Uh, I can get the asphalted, paved, stabilize the site much better. Um, so there's that, and then the other, I'm looking at this, and I will point out, because there is going to be some concrete sidewalks, even as proposed, but the left side of this road, as you go up, has two curb cuts, and it's more likely to be three or four when, when we're done. And the idea of pouring these, um, gives me heartburn, because you can't just, with asphalt, it's a much more flexible product, allows you to make changes like that on site, whereas asphalt, I mean, uh, concrete just wouldn't. Just a point, that all the, all the sidewalks on Main Street and turning up to essentially the end of the granite curbing that's installed now, if you drive by there, um, that will all be concrete. That, those are concrete per DOT specs. So just like we take the granite curbing and we transition it into the Cape Cod berm that Gene was talking about, that's asphalt. You transition those two. We'll transition the concrete sidewalks that will be front-facing, out against the curbing, right against Main Street. Those will be concrete. They'll turn up, uh, this road, and then we would transition those to the asphalt. By the way, I did a little research, a little late. Should have done it two years ago when I was in here getting this approved, but I don't even know what the names of our subdivisions in this town are. The ones, the ones on New Boss, and what's that, Sanctuary Preserve? Uh, the ones on Arnold, most of those are one-sided, and they're all, they're all asphalt. The older subdivisions are all asphalt or don't have sidewalks at all. But I'm not proposing to, to shorten or change the scope of the sidewalks, just the material. And these will have sidewalks on both sides. I don't know if that was necessary, or, at this point, something maybe, maybe more sensibly, I should, I should be in here asking for that, but I'm not going to. So just, just a material, materials-only change.
Okay, great, thank you, Matt. Any questions? Dane, do you have any comments or concerns? Wally?
I have some questions. Um, asphalt is like 20, 30-year product. Concrete is a 50-year, a 50-year product. I understand the ability and the ability to work with asphalt is, is much easier than with concrete, but asphalt, given from my, my background, is the, you're, you're dealing with a 55 and over community, and those people are going to be there the rest of their lives. And traditionally, asphalt is, is, well, it, it does heave, and in New England, it does heave, and you, after a few years, you're not going to have a flat area. You're going to have dips and things like that. It doesn't take much. It doesn't take much to throw somebody off balance. And that's why concrete in an environment or an area like this is ideal for folks walking. And that's, but when I first saw the concrete on here in the plans originally, I said, it's about time. It's a great thing, especially for this type of population here. Not that every 55, 56-year-old person can be falling. That's not true. We're talking about later on, stability and, and things like, like that. So that's why I was really happy about the concrete. Concrete will last for a very, very, very long time. Yes, it is more expensive, but it, it's, you're getting another 20 years out of it from that in the population. So, that being said, and, and how asphalt has a way of, of heaving and causing little dips and things like that, and the edges do begin to round, and it's just not as a, although easy to repair. I just, my concern is it, it, concrete would be a better thing, but I, I understand what you're at, you're saying, too. You're going to have like three or four curb cuts there, and just going through the whole idea with the concrete is enough to give you argument. I, I understand that as well. So I just, I just wanted to just go on record as saying that I, I would prefer concrete, um, but I understand what you're coming from, Matt, too, really, really well, Sue.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the comment, and we did talk with the engineer, we talked with the, the contractors. There, you hear both sides of that story, because once concrete, if you, if you lose a section of concrete, it's probably more dangerous to that pedestrian or wheelchair than, than a deviation or a heave in, in the asphalt. So we've, I've kind of heard both sides of that argument. Of course, I don't know which is right. I know it'll look great. Either way, this is good. From the Cape Cod berm to the sidewalk, there's four feet of, um, grass. So one way or another, it's going to look, look very, very nice. I think it's going to hold up well, um, either way, to be honest with you, Wally, but I, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, just a brief comment, and I, I understand what you're saying, Wally, but on the other hand, in two communities I've worked in, most of the issues have come with concrete sidewalks, both in Palmer and even in Southbridge, and some relatively new ones. When we have issues where people complain about tripping and falling, they seem to be really the concrete ones that we have the issues with, whether it's a tree that comes up and moves it, or some other settlement, but just a point. I mean, but I do understand what you're saying, for sure.
Sure, I'm sorry, I did have one thought.
Sure.
I know, um, I assume you're going to have a couple of curb ramps for tip-ups and downs, and those will have to be the 88 code. Comment I often hear is how much easier it is for contractors to hit those minimums or maximums with concrete. So if your team says that they can do it with asphalt, I believe them, but make sure they hit them.
Duly noted.
Very good.
And Wally, just one point that Gene brought this up. These are the DPW specs on, and they, they, there's, um, eight-inch compacted gravel base, you'd expect that. It's, it's asphalt and two lifts, uh, a two-inch and one-inch, I think it is.
Okay.
So should help.
So you have eight, you have an eight-inch base, you said?
Eight-inch.
Eight-inch base or two-inch course?
Eight-inch gravel base, um, two, two-inch binder and one-inch finish. So that.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that was great. Thanks, man.
That makes a big difference. If you just poured a sidewalk in one lift and, you know, you're going to get what you get.
I understand. That, that makes a difference. Thank you, man.
You have any comments or concerns?
I, just a comment. I'm, I'm kind of where Wally was a little bit, from a look and feel perspective as well, I think the concrete would be better for the, the place as far as selling as well. I think in the long-lasting of it, I think is important from that aspect. I also feel that, um, you know, asphalt does give off more fumes, particularly when heated, and, and I think that that is also worse for the environment. So personally, I prefer the concrete.
Environmentally, I, I, I agree, I, I totally agree. It's, it's, it's more, it's not exactly a carbon-neutral product, and it's, it's, it's here obviously.
For sure.
It's like a little red tar pit for your sidewalk. But it's, I, I, I have to, I, I grew up in a town that had, uh, concrete sidewalks put in in the 1930s, and, um, they had to be repaired over the years. But they repaired, and they were knocked off in like five-foot sections, and they would take them out if the tree roots came up, but they were still there. And they were still there in the 80s and 90s, and they're still, some of them are still there. But it's not that every concrete sidewalk is going to be like that. Just that they're, they're, they're better for the environment. I know they're more expensive. They don't give off the fumes. They don't, they don't, they're not as soft and as spongy in, in the, the hot weather and stuff. But the big, the, the big thing is, is the safety and the environmental thing. But, um, I do want to make it clear that I do understand what you're, what you're saying, Matt, I really do, as the contractor. But that's, I just, my personal feelings on it, and I, 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 I really do prefer concrete. I really do.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion then? Do we want to, uh, have a motion to allow this change for asphalt?
Uh, I make a motion to allow the change.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Have a good rest of your night. Everybody cleared out.